Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this work session. We are, I just want to let everybody know, testing our new technology here at City Hall. So we have new microphones, new cameras for the viewing audience at home and on YouTube. Pardon us if we have any technical difficulties. The first item of business is a presentation of an award to Dennis Miller of the Hagerstown Planning Commission. And I don't have a wireless mic on, so I might need a... Thank you. I just would like to recognize off-air, I guess, your lovely wife here, and the chairman of the planning commission is here.
Okay. I'll speak loudly. Can anyone over here?
I'm just going to improvise here tonight.
Watch. Everybody watch your eyes. He's ripping them up.
You're good to rip that. All right. Well, I do want to recognize, yes, a couple of members of the planning commission here, the chairman, Mr. Wright, and Judy Miller, served with Mr. Miller on the planning commission. I had the privilege of serving with them as well. But Dennis has been on the planning commission since 1974. And this year, we decided to name a volunteer award for him in honor of his dedication and service to the city. And hold that for me here, Marty. I'm sure they can catch it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
So Dennis is the first recipient of the Dennis Miller Volunteer Award. His will be the first name on this plaque that we will give out at our annual Boards and Commissions luncheon that we have every year. And in honor of you and your 40 years of service, we'd like to present you with this special plaque.
Super.
And again, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to say that Dennis brings a lot of, obviously, a lot of experience and knowledge to the planning commission. He's always a voice of reason, and it's been a pleasure to serve. Do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Yeah, absolutely. Jotted down a few things. And, you know, when you called about wanting to see me, I came in, and I thought, really, what you wanted me to do would be the new golf pro.
Well, we'll consider it. If you're looking for more work, sure.
But, you know, I was appointed by six managers. Does anybody know who the first one was back in 1974?
That was before Paddock. Paddock. It was Paddock, huh?
Yeah, good.
He was elected in '73. That's right.
Well, in that time, just a couple of things about the planning commission. I've probably been through four or five comprehensive plan updates. And also, in that time, our zoning ordinance was 20 pages. Now it is 200. So things are progressive. And in that time, it's probably true. And I've had probably attended 900 to 1,000 planning commission meetings during the time. Now, when I do retire, I'm trying to suggest to the commission that we amend the bylaws to have term limits, two 20-year terms.
Well, it's hard to find people with such staying power as you, Dennis. But I do want to say, also, as a token of our appreciation, you will be receiving a $100 gift card in downtown dollars. I'll mail that to you.
Wonderful.
So you'll get a little, almost like a little gift card in the mail.
That's super. Got a couple more things here.
Okay.
But we do have a great planning staff. Debbie, she's been, well, not as long as I am, but she's working on. And Doug, Doug's getting close to us. But also, I've met a lot of good people in the planning commission. So it's been a real good time. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. One, three. One, two, three.
So keep...
Good.
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, Marty serves on the planning commission.
I've served with Dennis for 10 years. That makes 25 percent of the time, a little over 10 years. I'm getting into that third of the time, okay? And I reinforce your words about experience and judgment and wisdom, not just your experience and all that. However, in exchange for those compliments, now maybe you can refer to Jonathan Hager every time you want to vent an argument. My mentor.
Thanks again. You certainly serve as a model for everybody who volunteers for the city.
Thank you so much.
So thank you. Give him a round of applause. Thank you for that. Yes, thank you for holding my council order. We, next on our agenda, will have a pop-up shop update. And I think our downtown manager, Andrew Sargent, will be giving us that update.
Good evening. Staff wanted to give a brief update on some of the efforts of outreach that have happened since the pop-up shops have started downtown. I think it's important to note that some of the outreach happened before the pop-up shops even happened. We had the pop-up shops in August and then again in November. And staff was instrumental in getting the pop-ups, some of the merchants into their locations, and that's when the relationships began to form. And just kind of briefly to recap, the pop-up shops brought 35 unique new businesses down to the downtown area for both of the events. That's fertile ground for new permanent merchants in our downtown. And obviously, you're cognizant of that. So during the pop-up shops, just one ally that staff, together with the all-elected officials, were a big presence during the pop-up shops. And we talked to each and every of the merchants who participated. Some of them were immediately perceptive and wanted to talk right away, so we scheduled meetings with them quickly. And then others, we've worked on solely over time. I am here to report some, give some updates on some of the ones that have decided to land permanently. We have, right outside the front door of City Hall here, we have James &amp; Jess's House of Goods. They've signed a lease at 101 North Potomac Street. That was a bail bonds and has been, not necessarily a very productive location for a while, and now it is an attractive antique store. Steampunk Sour Dough, we spent a lot of time with them, looked around the different locations, and it looks like they are going to land in the city and start fulfilling some of the wholesale orders that they've been receiving recently. And then, as of last week, Pretzel &amp; Pizza Creations has been on North Market Street down in Frederick's since 1991. They've decided to open up their second location at 20 West Washington Street, the old Rococo's in Mike Fitzgerald Building over there. They are extremely excited to get going, and that's been, that's a real win for the downtown for sure. We continue to work with other pop-up shop merchants to find them permanent locations, and we're working diligently with a couple who are looking at leases right now. But I also want to point out that parallel to these efforts, we, not only as a reminder to the pop-up shops, to the merchants who participated in the pop-up shops, if I say pop-up shops one more time, I might tie my tongue, but also as recruiting efforts to those who want to participate in subsequent pop-up shops, we are developing a program called Pop-Up to Permanent. And this is, it's a marketing outreach to tell the pop-up shops that we're here for them when they like to become, when they would like to become permanent businesses. That marketing material will outline business resources that are available to them. Pretty soon, we'll be able to talk about the Business Resource Center on West Washington Street, outline resources like SCORE and SBTDC or SBDC again. But also, some of the other things that we offer, like the revolving loan fund, provide some capital, get your business started. So we think that's going to be a very serious but a very helpful follow-up to what we've accomplished so far with the pop-up shops. So with that, does anybody have any...
When's the next one?
The next one is going to be for Blues Fest, and they're gearing up for that already. I don't think there are going to be any major changes in the format, but Blues Fest is the target.
The pop-up shop at Blues Fest is a really good idea, but a lot of those people who come to Blues Fest are from out of town. How's the connection going to be made between the crowd at Blues Fest and the fact that the shops are there?
I imagine that would be Blues Fest as Karen and just get that.
Come on up, Karen.
I would say that we do the connection as we did with August Oberfest. We actually provided a table right there for the pop-up shops to showcase what they had to the crowd as they came in. And we did some cross promotions, and it really worked well in the fact that people came into the event, they knew what were outside of the event, as well as they're outside of the event, they knew what was inside the event. So it was a great combination. As the holiday shop started with the tree lighting in the square, it seems like we really are pleased that they are complementing the large events and working together. So we'll do the same as we did in the past.
Is it possible that, on occasion, from the stage, it can be announced that the pop-up shops are in business?
Yes, it can.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Like August Oberfest, there was a lot of people who were coming to August Oberfest knew of the pop-up shops because of what Karen and her crew was talking about, and I imagine that we have the same setup this time.
Okay, good.
It was great. That's all I can tell you. It was great. And I know that people have said to me about how well it was, you know, as far as them being able to now at least see something happening in the city and hoping that there would be more venues. And of course, all of this goes right in with urban partners as having something on the streets, especially on the weekends. So hopefully, we can do more of it. But those girls need a lot of credit, a lot of credit, as well as staff as far as helping the city. But it was, it was great, Andrew.
Any other fees, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our preliminary agenda review. So if you don't mind taking out your packets, we'll go through. The first item I'd like to note is that we have scheduled a 5:00 mid-year budget work session. I know at least one council member was interested in getting a mid-year update on the budget, so we're looking at next week at 5...
No, February 24.
Oh, I'm sorry, February 24th. Making sure, just wanted to make sure everyone knew that we had that scheduled. Sorry, but just making sure you're paying attention. February 24th at 5:00 p.m. So next month, next month, before our regular session at 5:00 p.m., we'll have a mid-year budget update. Next week, though, Councilmember Brubaker has the implication. You know, in February, we have our work sessions on the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th. Just note that the February 3rd work session starts at 5:00 p.m. On the 10th and 17th, we'll start at 4:00, and on the 24th, we'll have a regular session at 7:00 p.m. We have several appointments to boards and commissions next week. We'll have our minutes. The consent agenda. Department of Community and Economic Development has street closures for various events in 2015. Does anyone have questions about those? How about open containers law exception for the Western Maryland Blues Fest, wind downs, and August Oberfest? Any questions on those? And we've got our trick-or-treat date set for October 30th, 2015. Any questions on those items? Parks and Engineering has a dump truck. We discussed that last week.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just realized that was a different truck we were talking about last week.
Department of Utilities has a class transformer remediation. HPD has books and tuition for the HCC Police Academy. Any questions about those consent agenda items? I'd like to give people appropriate wait time, just in case. Unfinished business, we have... I'm sorry?
Trick-or-treats on October 30th.
That's what it says. I thought... Mm-hmm. It's a Friday night?
It's a Friday night.
I know, it's far away. We're advanced planning.
Right here, trick-or-treat night, 2015, Friday, October 30th.
I always thought it was on trick-or-treat.
Well, I think they're doing it on the 30th because the mummers parade will be on Saturday, the 31st. So you don't have them at the same time. Unfinished business, the approval of the City Code amendments to Chapter 183, unattended donation containers. Any questions on that one? And we have the approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 216 Streets and Sidewalks, which we'll be talking more about tonight. New business, introduction of the ordinance, 2015 general obligation bond issue. Any comments on that one? Questions? Just the introduction of that ordinance. We're also introducing the ordinance for the acquisition of 806 to 808 West Washington Street, property being donated to the city.
Mr. Mayor, we got a contract sale moments ago.
Okay.
Very quickly, basically, this is 120 days due diligence to look at the property, see if there's any means, any problems. They're donating it to us, and it's as is, so it'll be in your package next week. I apologize if I haven't been to you soon.
No worries. Thank you for the update. Any questions on that? Item C under new business, approval of a resolution to supplement covenants for maintenance of Terps Boulevard medians. Any questions on that one? Item D, approval of Potterfield pool management contract. Questions on...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We didn't take the low bidder. We're completely fine with understanding that. In looking at the comparatives, though, there are two items. First is the charges for pool rentals. I noted that theirs is, their proposal was much lower than the other, the other three bidders. And I also note that their hourly rate for pool repairs is higher than the other three bidders, and their cost for swim lessons is the same for in-city residents versus non-city residents. Are any of those three items what you would consider direct revenue sources to that entity as it applies to their contract with the city?
Direct to them, to that company.
Right.
The first one is pool rentals. That'd be like an evening pool rental. That would be their charge, to have lifeguards there to staff it if, say, we wanted to have a pool party there.
So that's actually cheaper to us?
Yes, it is. And then we can increase that a little bit, too, if we want to, because those are significant.
Okay, so the 45 per hour, 60 per hour, that's not what's going to be charged to rent the pool?
That's the cost to us.
That's the cost to us, okay.
The maintenance numbers are in there if we choose to use them or not. We are not under any obligation to use them.
For the repair?
If we had an emergency or something, they would be available to deal with that. If it's something that we see as...
I got you.
More of a planned, we'll probably...
Or we can use a third party directly.
Yes.
All right.
And then the swim lesson charges, $50 is a very competitive rate. We can increase the non-resident rate. That's, again...
But did we set that? Did they set that? Who gets that revenue? Or is that what they're charging us?
For swim lessons, they get 75 percent of the revenue. We get 25 percent of the revenue. And we try to keep that one lower so that we have more participation.
Okay. I asked about those three because I was wondering if it could offset, if there was a way to look at that, if things go well in future years of changing those to offset the difference in the, what I would call the lump sum, you know, bid price. But that explains it. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on pre-management? Okay, item E is the approval of an MOU with Customized Energy Solutions and Mitsubishi Heavy Industry, which is on our agenda for tonight, so we'll be talking about that more. Item F is approval of inductees of the Hagerstown Circle of Achievement at Memorial Park and approval of a date for unveiling of the Circle of Achievement and grand opening of Memorial Park.
And the motion is on the backside of the first page, so that includes the 12 names.
Any questions on that? Item G, approval of revised standards for induction to the Circle of Achievement at Memorial Park. Item H, approval of the Hagerstown... Item I is the approval of an amendment to city residency, city center residency initiatives to add Hagerstown Community College students as eligible program applicants. Any questions on that one? Talked about that before. And finally, the approval of sidewalk standards and conditions also on our agenda tonight. Any questions about anything on the agenda left for discussion? All right. Thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is the Customized Energy Solutions Mitsubishi Heavy Industry proposal. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hello, how are you?
Excellent.
This is an exciting proposition.
It most certainly is. You can see it on our faces, can't you? With me today is Bill Scofield, who's Vice President of Business Development with Customized Energy Solutions. The quick synopsis before I get into the meat of the memo is, we've had a relationship with Customized Energy Solutions since 2002. Bill and I have worked together in those, oh, 13 years now. That company's grown from three employees, of which Bill was an original, to over 100. They've won many awards and have come very far in this past four years, so congratulations to Bill and his group on that.
Is that local business?
They're based in Philadelphia.
Oh, headquartered in Philadelphia.
Yeah, which just so happens to be where PJM is, which is the business that we have with them, is basically dealt with PJM in instances like this. And of course, then, our other partner would be Mitsubishi Heavy Industries, as we're all aware of. Their size and magnitude and the work they perform, they're a $34 billion company, 80,000 employees worldwide. So Bill's kind of brokered this to bring us all together as players. And what our proposal is for tonight is basically that we'll be bringing for you the memo of understanding. It's a two-page, rather innocuous document that's been prepared for the three of us in order to set the groundwork for moving forward with trying to develop an energy storage system project between the three of us here at the city of Hagerstown. The project itself, an energy storage system for what's being proposed, it's a lithium-ion battery configuration. It's housed in a trailer that's approximately 10 by 40 feet. Each one of those is 2 megawatt. We've looked at configuration, they were from 2 to 20 megawatts. So it would be units cited that the property we're looking at is adjacent to our plant substation, which would utilize a portion of the melt property that's in the process of being demolished. I think all of you have been by recently and seen the progress that's being made there, so that is moving along very nicely for us in the demolition of that. The process itself is, the storage systems act as a battery. They take power in when there's excess off the system, release it when it's required, and there's a market within PJM for that. So there is money to be made on the process, hence the reason you see the players that are involved in this. The reason that they've come to us is our relationship that we have with Customized Energy Solutions, their relationships with the big players in the systems, the ease that's there for them to work with a group as us versus going with an IOU, a large corporation. That symbiotic relationship's much quicker and faster. It is cutting-edge technology that we're going to utilize in this process.
And how many facilities like this on the East Coast?
There are 26 in the United States. There are two just within the PJM grid. CES has monitoring capability and operate three energy storage systems within the United, they're all in the United States.
Yeah, I think we actually have a fourth one up in Canada as well.
Okay. So they do have, you know, some knowledge on how to the ins and outs and operations of this system. The system itself, it's what it basically does. It helps in a regulation of power output specifically for renewable resources, solar, wind power. It's not consistent. This allows it to keep the, to simplify, just keep the line a little flatter so you don't get the fluctuations exactly. We have used that term a few times, so... The memorandum itself basically just details that we're going to supply information, they're going to supply information. There's no transfer of property, anything at this point, so it's information. And then we will develop an agreement between all the parties, whether it's a lease agreement, however we structure it for payment to the city for utilizing the property and our lines. That'll be worked out in the agreement, will be worked through with our legal counsel, brought back to mayor council for discussion numerous times, so you can see the progress that we're making in the system itself.
Where do they make these trailer size lithium-ion batteries? Where are those manufactured usually?
In the case of MHI, who we're talking about, working with, they are made in Japan, so they would be made in Japan and shipped over.
Are they ever looked, are they ever looking at markets in the U.S. to manufacture those kinds of things?
Yeah, I can't speak to what MHI's plans are. This is sort of an emerging industry, so I speculate and say if there was robust enough demand, they might consider manufacturing here in the United States.
It'd be nice if we could make them here and...
Yeah. There is another, there are other companies who definitely are manufacturing here. I'm aware of another company that has just bought a facility in North Carolina actually to start manufacturing, so within the broader storage industry.
High-tech jobs.
Yeah.
Great.
It's been great, great proposal.
I can't see any downsides. Are there any potential downsides?
The, we have opened the dialogue with First Energy Supply, Allegheny Energy Supply, who holds our wholesale power supply contract. There's provisions within our contract that shows when the transfer in the system out of the system, the formula that you use to make sure that financially both factions remain whole. We have to work through those issues, maybe get an addendum to the contract. We're not sure yet, but we've worked with Mark Boyer. He's reviewed our MOU and what we want to do. Tom Rudebush, our FERC attorney's on board. He's reviewed all this operations. He knows what's coming up. So it, just the engineering that's required, the transfer of information, we'll also be having discussions, four-way discussions, then with our generation supplier to make sure we have everything covered with that. We feel that we have the provisions in the contract, just want to make sure that we all understand what each of them are.
Any more I might just share, maybe you can remind everybody about our rates versus the average national rates?
Our, the average national rate was quoted, was it 13.4 cents a kilowatt hour? We're 7.7 cents in December.
It's almost half the national average.
Almost half is the rate, and we're locked into that rate, as you well know, through 2017. The cost of power nationwide does continue to increase, and we've been so fortunate...
Except for here in the city of Hagerstown.
Here at the city, and it's been our conservative approach. We don't know what the next wholesale power supply contract will hold. Will they bid on it? Will they offer us a number decrease? We don't know. If not, our relationship with Bill and his company, they work towards the same ends that we do in operating our system. They go out and bid short-term, mid-term, long-term power contracts, so they could be a great assistance to us also in case we do need to change something in how we structure our contracts.
Your proposal mentions possible future solar. Is that just onsite, or would this enable solar in good locations around the city to be stored and therefore utilized better, redistributed?
And let Bill speak to it. So we looked at the property that the HLD currently owns, the old coal yard in the tipple in the back, to utilize that property on-site. It would take some work. There are some market issues that we have with that.
Well, I thought it might also mean, because this is a way, you know, the unreli, unpredictability of solar energy as a steady source, battery-type things help alleviate that. That's why I thought it might be have to do with solar elsewhere on our grid.
Yeah, it's definitely true that the need and part of us driving the development of storage is the increased penetration of intermittent resources, so solar and wind primarily. The way this particular...
They go out and bid short-term, mid-term, long-term power contracts. So they could be a great assistance to us also in case we do need to change something in how we structure our contracts.
Your proposal mentions possible future solar. Is that just onsite, or would this enable solar in good locations around the city to be stored and therefore utilized better, redistributed?
And let Bill speak to some. We looked at the property that the HLD currently owns, the old coal yard in the tipple in the back, to utilize that property onsite. It would take some work, there are some market issues that we have with that.
Well, I thought it might also mean, because this is a way, you know, the unrelive, unpredictability of solar energy as a steady source, battery-type things help alleviate that. That's why I thought it might be have to do with solar elsewhere, on our grid.
Yeah, it's definitely true that the need and part of us driving the development of storage is the increased penetration of intermittent resources, so solar and wind primarily. The way this particular market works, it kind of doesn't matter where the intermittent resource is. Generally, that's the case, that the Hagerstown system is just part of the larger system. So the fact that we're locating the batteries here may be helping to deal with issues of a wind farm up in Ohio. So it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Or even the solar farm at the state prison complex.
Correct, correct. Those are all part of the overall system.
So it's not necessarily site?
It's not necessarily site-specific. In some cases, there are tax subsidies and other things that will give you incentives at the federal level and whatnot to co-locate them, but those are sporadic in every system.
Mike, some council members have talked about doing a park or a park-like development down by the MELP.
Yes.
How would, how would this be screened, or how would this blend into it?
Yeah, and we've had numerous discussions on that. It would more than likely, size-wise, we would just extend the fence that we have in place at the plant substation now. And we'd already planned to do green screenings at a minimum around that entire site. So we would locate, when you come off of Mount Etna, screen it all the way down by the Potomac Edison Station, our station. Continue with this, it would make a turn back up towards the creek. And then we would also then screen along the creek side of it too, so it would be like a green peninsula off of Mount Etna Road. You know, we would bring in mature, not, we'd bring in two-foot plantings and let them go. We'd bring in mature and make sure they were up so the screening was there as quickly as possible. And then that would leave approximately two-thirds of the MELP site then available for whatever process we want to work with it here at the council.
If you guys and all your experience, now how to screen substations? Seriously, I'm serious though. You see a lot more nationwide than we do, you know.
Yeah, our park authority seems to be the choice because of quickness, the growing, the size you can get. It's that stovepipe, you can get them situated and do a staggered screen so you don't see it along any of the sides there. So if, once again, it'll be on then for, the motion will be on for next week for voting. If we go forward, then we'll start the real process of going forward with this, and I'll keep you updated like I have with the MELP projects, so you know where we stand and how we're moving forward.
Well, I just want to thank you for the work on this and for what you've accomplished over the MELP site. And not without its challenges, but you've really stayed on top of it and kept us informed. And I know that with this endeavor, if anyone can get it done, you can certainly make it happen. You and your team.
Thank you. Yeah, Nathan's with me every step of the way on that. Whenever we go to MELP, it's 99%, it's he and I together, and he's followed and been in the tune plus the rest of our staff. So I'll let the rest of them know for the thanks.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just two comments, and the first is, and they're both sort of related. But the first is, I think it is fairly safe to say that this type of project would not happen if not for MELP being demolished. I think it would make it much more difficult, palatable for that property and to manage that and to manage any expectation for expansion efforts into the future. So I find it interesting that we're sort of removing old technology that we're generally responsible for putting there and assisting to put in new technology, which will be responsible for managing, you know, the impact to the public as it's there. And so I think that that's a critical part of the story here, not to mention how quickly we were able to move this forward. But the second is, I equate this a little bit to when I served with the county and we were able to land, if you will. And I don't think we did much of the landing, but the T-Roe Price project, which nobody really knows about, if you will, or cared all that much about. But that brought in a significant revenue associated with advanced technology. But it wasn't a real sexy thing, if you will, to the public eye because it was pretty much a, you know, systems redundancy project that spurred a lot of interest and not a lot of employment. And so I equate it to that success that just sort of quietly happens, that doesn't often get the accolades that I think it deserves, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts. Next item on our agenda is body worn police camera discussion. Just like to say at the outset, this is only a discussion, we're not here to make any decisions tonight. We're gathering information, and I'm sure it'll be an ongoing discussion that we have. With that, take it away, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Yeah, it's a request to council, they're asked to bring this discussion to the table and talk about body worn cameras. They're getting a lot of attention in the media and in law enforcement around the country in different areas. But still at the early stages is my overall take on this, but we brought one device along with you, just take a look at, on what these things look like. And I have some materials to go through. I've asked, I brought along Captain Langston with me. Captain Langston's in charge of our operations, and I've kind of tasked him with doing some homework on this project. So a lot of my notes come from him, and he'll have a little bit of input on some discussion he's had with a similar-sized department as Hagerstown. So my thought was go through the, go through the ups and downs of the program and take any questions that you have. And at the end, I'd like some direction from council on whether or not this is something you want us to pursue. So starting on the front there, we're on the second slide, I have the term overview there. And I'll have this PowerPoint available to you later on, we just couldn't do it with the technology tonight. We're just still getting things fixed around here, so. Starting off with Maryland legislation, currently there is no legislation proposed in Annapolis on this. And it's something we're looking at, the session just started, so I wouldn't be surprised if something doesn't come about during this session. But as of right now, there's nothing that we can find that's proposed.
We talked to our delegate this morning, delegate Wilson said that he is aware of. Some potential legislation that might be coming through, so it's definitely something we have to stay posted on.
Absolutely, yeah. That's why, part of this recommendation is, let's wait and see what happens during this session. But it's a good time to start the discussion. So that's the first point, and I wanted to make that. Thank you for following up on that. So in, switching to the second page here at the top, potential benefits. We looked at a couple reports, the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention put out a very long position paper on this. They looked at, and they looked across the state of Maryland. Currently, at the time they published that, there were 15 police departments, but all of them were very small police departments. The largest being Laurel Police Department. All the rest of them were very small departments. I believe Frederick may be looking at it this coming fiscal year, but again, nothing large scale yet. DC is testing them as well. So some of the potential benefits here, of course, the biggest one here to do any of this, why do it? Is to improve the police and community relations. And with that, I'd just like to pause for a second. You know, I think that any, anytime you videotape our officers doing our work, we come to work every day knowing that pretty much everything we do can be videotaped or is going to be videotaped. And I just, I'd be remiss not to mention the fact that I think all this program would do is highlight the work that we're already doing, the good work that we're already doing. These officers are answering 60,000-plus calls for service every day, I mean, sorry, every year. And that equates to a lot of citizen contact. And they're doing it right, we have very few complaints, and I think you know that from our, our legal side of things. So with that said, improving police and community relations is key to anything that we do. And will this program do that? Yes, I believe it's one of the benefits of the program. It just opens a layer of transparency within the department. People can see, hey, everything was recorded on video. If you have any questions, refer to the videotape, please. Enhancing public confidence in the police kind of goes hand in hand with that. It just gives everybody a chance to look over the police officer's shoulder and say, you know, did you handle that correctly? Civil liability reduction is one of the bigger things, and Tom will talk about that as well with Rialto Police Department's experience with it, reducing civil liability. Facilitating citizen complaint resolution. Again, we have some good stats on that, but basically, once people know they're being videotaped or there is a videotape in hand, their follow-through on any kind of potential complaint reduces. They know it was caught on video, so it's hard to say the policeman did anything else. Officer training, we think it can help in officer training quite a bit. It can help reinforce some of the policies that we have in place. Can be helpful in police academy training, in-service training. Just a way to show a newer officer coming onboard, this is how you should handle that domestic violence call. This is how you should handle that traffic stopper, that drunk driver. It's really nice to just see one of your, your partners that you work with on the street, how they handled that call. You get to look over that. Prosecution support, of course, using these things in court. I do anticipate fewer trials, although we'll have a discovery issue with, which we'll talk about in a sec. But prosecution support is going to be paramount. Just refer to the videotape again, especially something like a drunk driver in case and things like that really help out. The last would be officer safety, and you kind of tie officer safety into the reduction in use of force that you'll see. And anytime we use use of force, you know, that puts our officers at risk. We see a lot of officer injury, a lot of cop claims that come from that. And so it just changing the behavior out there on the street with the people we encounter, we think it will overall reduce our chances, our likelihood of use of force, and along with that, improve the officer's safety because we're not rolling around the ground quite so much. So that's more of the good news there. Potential limitations over the unintended consequences. The biggest one here is management oversight and costs. This is not a cheap system, it's very complicated, lots and lots of videos. And just managing that program can be very intense. Privacy issues are certainly going to come up. When can you videotape? When can't you? Training is going to be key in that, and making sure that we're doing it the right way and following the right policies. Discovery refers to when you have to share things in court with the defense attorneys. So just like we release all of the copies of our police reports, we have to make copies of all the videotapes and share them as well. So we have a lot of extra time in managing that program. Public information requests are going to be a big one, I think, for us, getting those and fulfilling those. So it's going to be a little more time for Erin Wolf and her team on handling these public information requests and lots and lots of time to fill those requests if one is actually warranted to fill. So if we have to make a lot of videotapes for someone, that just takes time. Police morale, this can negatively impact police morale. You know, in general, police do a great job. And having somebody looking over your shoulder all the time with a video camera, recording every word, comes out of your mouth, every action, that can impact your morale. That's obvious. The last one, I think, is one of the bigger ones, and it's sort of yet to be really tested. And that's the chilling effect that these cameras can have on the public. If I put that camera on and walk up to somebody and start holding the conversation, I guarantee you that won't be the same conversation I have with that person if I didn't have that camera on. It can just chill the conversation right away when they know they're being, they're, you know. It's very hard to get the public to call us. When we get on the scene and we go out and we talk to the neighbors about what happened, that's difficult for them to answer that door and talk to us. And when they see that video camera, it could be a barrier for them in even continuing that conversation. I believe some of that can be handled with policies, and there are times when you can turn those cameras off, and there are some model policies to go along with that. But again, that's where the training aspect comes into play. We don't want them turning them off all the time, but there would be certainly times when that's worth our while to do that.
And I think it's just important to note what you're, the underlying premise of what you're saying is what's called the Hawthorne Effect. When people know they're being recorded, their behavior tends to change. And I'm not, and that could be whether it's police officers or members of the public, but I think that's the underlying sort of premise of all of this, good or bad.
Absolutely.
Well, this is classic, is he went that way. I mean, somebody's less likely to say, he went that way. I mean, that's the old, the old thing. Because it's a casual, quick thing, you know, real quick, not interrogation, you're running after some, somebody might just freeze up.
Yep. So part of the homework assignment here for Tom, when I asked him to take a look at this, was find a police department that's doing this already, that's similar to our size, get ahold of them and see what they're doing. So with that, Tom, tell about Rialto Police Department.
Yes, I did a little look in Rialto's in California, and it's about our size. They have 115 sworn officers in a similar demographic. The reason they're significant is they actually had an academic study done of their use of the body worn cameras. And you can see the statistics are very well, they have, you know, great success with them. Use of force went down 59%, and that's over a year in the control group with the camera versus those without the camera.
And can I just pop a comment on that for a second? Because when you look at that, I don't want people to interpret that in an inappropriate manner. You know, you talked about Hawthorne Effect, and we all talked about cameras changing people's behavior. When I look at that patrol officer's use of force decrease, I think that is much more reflective on the individual that's about to be arrested, knowing that there's a body camera recording everything that's happening, than it's reflective of police officers suddenly aren't going to use force because they have a camera. Because when the camera is on somebody and they know it, yeah, it's a downside when you're trying to get somebody to tell you the name of who just did that, but I think it's a very positive side. As an attorney, I know when people say what happened when they come see you versus the reality of what happened. And I, and I just want to emphasize that, because somebody could look at that and think that that is a reflection on police suddenly not using force because they're on camera. And I think it's a reflection on police not having to use force because of cameras.
And that's exactly what the study found, the compliance based on the camera alone is what reduced the use of force. And also the complaints was even greater, simply because, you know, when people know that there's video evidence, they don't complain. So I did talk to their captain, running their operations, and he actually has two sergeants to administer the program. So he says it's very intensive, the freedom of operation, freedom of information requests are overwhelming. But he said the money they've saved in litigation alone is paid for those two administrators for that program.
So the civil litigation, I think, is the big cost saver, I think, for our city on that one. Talking about the model policy, there are a couple different model policies that are available. I just grabbed some excerpts from the one from the International Association of Chiefs of Police, IACP. And I just thought it might cover a couple of questions that are typically asked. When do you have to turn the camera on? The model policy is on all contacts with citizens, you would have your camera on. So this would be any uniform officer doing a traffic stop, answering a call for service, stopping a subject on the street, any of those types of things. Whenever possible, officers should inform the individual that they're being recorded. And you've seen that time and time again with dash cams and things like that, when an officer walks up and says you're being audio and visually recorded. So that, that's one of the recommendations for a policy. And then are there times, are there exceptions, when you would not record? And yes, there would be. Again, the model policy is that if there's, somebody has an expectation of privacy, they're in their own home, and they want to, you're there for legitimate reasons. You're not there to arrest them, but you're there to talk to them for something, and they would ask that camera to be turned off. They're just recommending that the officer make the notation on camera, then I'm turning the body camera off at the request of the victim, the homeowner, that sort of thing.
Or I would assume like if, in the course of an investigation, like you said earlier, that you may not want to have the...
If you're trying to talk to witnesses and they're very reluctant, then you would allow some room for the officer to turn that camera off to talk to a witness, things like that. Where you would typically have it on is when you would go into a house and you're going to make an arrest for it, for some reason, then you would have it on. So those are just some examples, I thought, from the policy. The policy's a couple pages long, and it would have to fit the department. Training, I touched on that real quickly, initial training. Important thing with this is you just can't say, here's the camera, go wear it, and good luck. You have to really mock up some scenarios for these officers. You have to take them off the street and let them spend a few hours just kind of getting used to the equipment, not just the technical side of things. How does it work? How do I download it? But actually, when do I turn this on and when don't I? I don't want this to impede the officer's actions. I don't want it to, I don't want it to delay their reaction to something and get them hurt on the street. It has to be second nature, so we have to train for that. It's another piece of gear to wear. They wear a lot of gear already, they have a lot of decisions they have to make on every call for service. So we're getting out of the car, and you're taking in all of your, your safety things first, and you have to remember to turn the button on. So some of that's going to take some time, remembering all that. I mentioned academy, field training and in-service, using our own videos to train our own officers, I think is one of the best benefits in the training side of things. training side of things. If you can watch one of your fellow officers do the exact same call that you might have to go out there and do this, so it'd be great for training for the academy and in-service. Available technology, Tommy, we'll talk about that.
I'll just touch on it real quick. I showed you all, this is a fairly cheap camera with limited features, but it does have IR and you can shut the audio off as well. Another thing that's, I think, they're having the most success with is the buffering. When the camera's off during normal operation, but if an officer sees a criminal act or violation, he turns it on. It automatically captures 30 seconds previous to turning the camera on, as well as a certain amount of seconds after they turn it off. So if the officer turns it off because something happened, you didn't want to record it, it's on there as well, but it also catches a lot of traffic, red light, stop signs, that sort of thing. That's the big thing with that, I think. Talking about the program management a little bit, just last year, over the course of uniform officers, there was over 100,000 events where officers had some sort of contact, 102,000 and change. So that means, you know, 100,000 videos. That's a lot of data storage we've got with our IT department and they're looking at what it would take to manage that, trying to get the records to public defender's office or defense attorneys. Without that much video is already the challenge that keeps our record department busy. That's a real big thing, the Freedom of Information Act. We have approximately 100,000 cameras in the city already. Unfortunately, we don't get a ton of requests for those, but we do get them more from criminal cases than we do from inquiring minds. And that takes a lot of time. Some of the services available is, you know, cloud storage and data storage where it can be managed at a lot less cost to us, I think.
Right. So a couple of things we've learned in looking into this and from our own history is, first off, the management of the program. A similar sized department takes two sergeants full-time to run the program. And we're recommending one person full-time with this, a manager, maybe a supervisor to run this program for us to get started. I'm hoping we can just run it with one person and not need the two. Based on the technology, I think we'll look for some technology that limits the... How many times you have to touch the data and sort of automate it as much as you can. But you still need somebody to fill those, to manage the program. When I say manage a program, it's not just, you know, making sure it gets stored, but in the studies, one from the cops office from the Department of Justice said, "If you're going to do this program, you really need to take a sampling of those videos. You need to... The supervisor needs to take a look at those videos and you need to have somebody kind of removed from the day-to-day operations within your agency. Take a look at a sample, four or five of those videos every day. Kind of build some confidence in the system that things are being looked at and you're looking for policy failures, you're looking for the repeated... Any repeated action that might, you know, just cause for concern." So you need somebody to look at them, need somebody responsible for that program. Fill those discovery requests for court, manage the data, handle the training and the equipment costs. The other thing we've always learned is that shared equipment just doesn't seem to work, especially for police. We're very hard on equipment. And so we would recommend... We're recommending, if we did this, we would need 60 cameras. And that would give a camera for everybody in uniform patrol and all the ancillary uniform divisions that we have. And then leasing the equipment is one of the better options we've seen out there. You lease the equipment and it has some off-site storage. So it's basically $1,000 a camera per year, per officer. So you're adding $1,000 per patrol officer per year to the budget and then one manager to manage the program. So that comes out to about 140,000. We could dig into that some more and get you some better numbers, but I wanted to give you something that we'd be looking at as far as a ballpark. So, you know, that's where we're at. So next steps for us is, first off, is this something the council wants us to pursue, look into more, take a look at the legislation and maybe come back in a couple of months after the state legislation's over? We may be mandated to do this by the state legislature. We may not. It may just be a council decision. But either way, it's a good time to have the discussion here.
Could you tell us what level of involvement the police union will have in this, with this issue? I mean, have they... Are they stakeholders? Are they...
Oh, they're absolutely, absolutely stakeholders. And I'm glad you mentioned that. We did meet with the union. We also met with our supervisors about the practicality of this. And the overall general... There are some concerns with it, but overall, the feedback we got was positive. Again, they think it's just going to highlight the efforts that they do every day. There will be something extra they're required to do. They're concerned about, "If I forget to turn my camera on, what's going to happen to me?" You know, we'll work through those things. But overall, the feedback was positive.
I'm not a technical expert, but that thing is kind of clunky. And I mean, they had those Google glasses now. That seems like that'd be the way to go.
This is one of the earlier ones. This is just an inexpensive one we got just to take a look at.
And also, what these fine gentlemen haven't even discussed is not only all these things, but I know the three of us could come up with many scenarios and stories of the preliminary hearings, the motions to suppress and the trials that would not occur, where police officers would not be in court. And a good example is within the last year, a client of mine who accused an officer of lying when he said that he threw the gun while he was running. And this was a felon who was facing, with a rather nasty, violent criminal history, would have been facing a minimum mandatory five years without parole. Had there been a videotape of that incident, he probably would have gotten every bit of that. But because there was no videotape, there was a preliminary hearing, there was a motion to suppress. And there almost was a trial, if not for photographs taken from the phone. So not only will you streamline the criminal justice system, causing our officers to spend less time in the court system, but there's a huge odds that some of these violent criminals that are not getting the sentences that these gentlemen would like to see them get right now, would in fact be getting them because, as Warner Wolf says, you know, "Let's go to the video." And when you go to that video, suddenly plea agreements are not as necessary for the state as they are now, just because nobody's worried about a trial. If it's going to take a couple of minutes to show a video and I can tell you who's a defense lawyer, there's not a whole lot of defense lawyers going to try that case either.
Well, it's funny you say that because I was just thinking, we're not going to get the defense attorney lobby in here arguing against this, are we?
No, you haven't been here arguing for it. No, 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 seriously, in all seriousness. And listen, let me tell you, and the gentleman will also tell you, cameras can be a downside to prosecution in certain cases. We used to videotape drunk drivers, right, at HPD? You know, somebody who is a very, very seasoned alcoholic with a huge amount of tolerance can take a breathalyzer test, which clearly makes them over the limit. And a jury can watch a videotape of that person and say, "They don't look intoxicated to me." So there's advantages and disadvantages. That no longer is an issue because we have a per se law. So even if you look sober as could be, if you blow a certain breathalyzer, it's not an issue. But no, believe it or not, defense lawyers are much more interested in the truth than people would think. The problem is, when somebody comes in and says, "This is what happened," if they're your lawyer, you would like your lawyer to believe you. And so that's your job until you've been proven to be a fine, Tom.
I think it comes down to, and you didn't have it in here, in your potential benefits and limitations, but there was a point in the movie Philadelphia where Denzel Washington says, "With all due respect, your honor, we don't live in this courtroom." And I think that that statement goes hand in hand with other conversations we've had on any number of other issues of the age-old issue of public safety trying to keep up with criminal activity, of any level of that activity. And let's be real honest, I mean, you know, social media and the immediacy of social media continues to climb that technological ladder, continues to shape and form public perception outside of the courtroom. And it doesn't matter whether you go on, you know, Facebook or Twitter or whatever and you go onto Mr. Conservative or MSNBC or what have you. The one thing that the public clearly has in that venue now, and that didn't exist 10 years ago, was the immediacy of the mobile phone in every single person's pocket that takes video and places that video on demand right into the public forum. And I think that one of the benefits and limitations that isn't listed here is that just like so many other facets, whether it's chemically synthesized drugs or what have you, it is the ability for the use of technology to keep up. And so I think that that avenue of leveling the playing field is necessary. And it doesn't matter whether, you know, it's... It's just odd when we come to public safety, we often take this approach as it applies to technology to say, "Whoa, we shouldn't apply that technology to public safety services." You know, and I just... I can't understand that at times when every element outside of public safety services is applying technology, you know, for the advancement of its purpose. And so I think that whether it's a public or a potential benefit or a potential limitation, I think that it's based, it has the ability to level that playing field to say, "There may be eight videos that eight folks took of this one scene and you get to see a contextual, you know..."
360-degree view.
Yeah, scene of it, based just on that view of the 30 seconds that they felt like videotaping that particular scene. And any entity can take that 30 seconds of a X number a minute incident and you get a feel just from those 30 seconds. So I think it levels that playing field to say, "No, this is what happened for the entire 30 minutes, not just 30 seconds. This is what led up to this incident. This was the actual resolution to it." You know, and that... A good example is at the Mommers Parade about four years ago, standing down near Potomac Towers. And it must have been 10 times that this police officer asked these two young men to settle down and move along. And after the 10th time, I think that they... Clearly, those two individuals weren't going to do that. And so the one police officer pinned the one young man to the ground, to which the other individual then responded with, you know, some force for a very brief moment until he was subdued. You know what I mean? If I caught that 30 seconds, just in that context, it would be clearly different than the entire 10-minute process that unfolded and which those individuals were given every opportunity. And so I think that that's, you know, that as that technology improves on that public side, it's going to have to also improve on the public safety side.
Let's hear from... One other thing I'd like to say is, we know why this camera situation has come about nationally. That's not why this camera situation has come about locally. This is not driven on all the complaints we have. It's the exact opposite. Matter of fact, if there's one thing, unless I'm wrong from being on this council as long as I've been on, that we aren't going to get a lot of savings from this, is saving money from all the lawsuits that we don't have. When I see the amount of money that Baltimore City has paid out in litigation from suits against their police officers, right, wrong or indifferent, I don't know, it's astounding. And I just want to say, I think we get notified every time anybody ever even threatened to sue us or our police department. I can't remember the last lawsuit we've had against this city because of police officers' actions in the 20 years I've been here. I don't rem... We may have gotten a threat or two, but I don't want anybody to believe that we're swamped in claims against our department. It's the exact opposite.
I think credit has to go to the police.
It does.
Establishing good relationships with all of the different neighborhoods in our city.
You're right, Mayor, and that's what I want to stress here. And, you know, when the union's been brought up, I don't want anybody to think this is being done with any thought process in mind, other than to support our department. And there are going to be other people out there who are very happy to hear it because they may feel differently, but...
And I think that it recognizes, within this community like any other, the ability to capture and address some of your weaknesses. This community, clearly the numbers show that this community has a weakness of domestic violence. I mean, it just... It occurs in this community. It's, you know, pretty steady numbers. And the ability for the camera to catch that initial contact that you make with a victim that may oftentimes not want to say their story, you know, will speak the words that you don't get a real feeling for three to four to six weeks afterwards in a courtroom. And so I think those types of things are addressed.
And the last thing I'll say, there is going to be a day, it's not today and it's not tomorrow, but there's going to be a day... When CSI came out, the officers are smiling because they know what I want to say. Juries started to want to, you know, "Where's the DNA? You know, you mean you're going to get DNA in three hours?" And they... Jurors were expecting to the...
Forensics.
Were, "Seriously? You would actually have to have jury instructions?" And on voir dire, asking jurors, you know, "Are you expecting? Can you convict without this kind of evidence?" But there's going to be a day in this country when, instead of being prosecutors that are using these tapes, there's going to be defense attorneys saying, you know, "Why isn't this department showing you a videotape? What are the..." That's not in the next year, two years, three years, but I think it's coming. And Kristen's absolutely right. If everybody else is going to videotape our police officers, they need to be videotaping them.
We've heard from two council members. Other council members have thoughts or questions?
I don't have problem one. Can I speak first? Because I've always been... Sorry, Marty. I get to do it tonight. I've always been the one that's been very supportive of public safety. And I think it's a step that we have to go forward in. And as much as the mayor doesn't think technology's in my brain, this is one part of technology that I'm for.
So we can put a body camera on you?
Oh, I don't care. You'd have a real thrill with that one. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Monson? I'll save the best for last. Marty?
You know, I don't know whether cameras are good or bad. And there's nothing about this conversation yet to convince me that they're good or bad. I need to have more information. I think that disinformation isn't sufficient to tell me if cameras are good or bad. But I do know this, that if cameras disadvantage the cops, that's bad. If cameras empower the crooks, the bad guys, that's bad. And I really need to understand. Now, I know you can interpret this information any way you want, but when I look at this chart, use of force chart, I see a chart that says that the police aren't probably doing their job as well as they used to because there are cameras there. Now, that's contrary to what Councilman Messner said, but that's the way I see that chart. And complaints, it's clear, the complaints are way down. But yet, if I were a witness that was going to be on a camera, I don't think I would be a witness because I'd know that some of those bad guys might be coming after me in the future. So I'd like to hear a lot more. Now, the one thing I do want to say is, I have no particular interest in raising taxes to make this happen in council or in the city. I think we need to find a way to find efficiencies to make this happen if it eventually happens. I'll be anxious to see what the General Assembly says and I'll be anxious to see what information we continue to get from other police forces that use cameras. And I just want to say this, when it comes to crime, I want the cops to be advantaged, period. When my neighbors are getting shot at or something else bad has happened, I think the police need to be able to do their job totally unimpeded by anything. I think the police need to be able to do their job totally unimpeded by anything.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brubaker?
Well, can I say the jury's still out? But I agree with Dawn. I think it's interesting. I think we should pursue it and get more information. And I think the chief laid it out very well. See what happens in the General Assembly. See what some of our peer jurisdictions like Annapolis and Frederick have, I think, pretty analogous police departments, same size as ours, same responsibility level. Rockville and Gathersburg, they tend not to have the same level of responsibility, but some of them are independent municipalities. What's happening there? And also, those municipalities have a lot more budgetary capability than we do. So I keep hearing, you know, week after week, really nice things to do and perhaps, but we're going to have to decide by May 31st how to pay for all those. So I'll just say that. But what I don't want it said, though, is that any one of us said, yes, we're going to do this. We're not saying that.
I think what we're saying is, yes, we want more exploration of it.
Yeah, more exploration of it. And while I think some council members are stronger on the subject than others, that's where I think we're going. But if someone had thrown back at me, well, you said you didn't object to it back in January. That's not what I'm saying.
I'm assuming one source of possible revenue might be speed camera.
But we're spending that on other things. It's not...
But it can only be spent for public safety.
Well, I know, but it's, that's not new revenue. That's not new revenue. It's already being used to cover public safety expenses.
I think we all pretty much agree that this is not going to be in the investor's budget. I mean, I can't imagine that...
It's not going to be rolled out this year.
The type of information we need in getting back from Maryland. The one thing I would say, though, is it's conceivable this may be, this may be the time, however, to try to get grant funding because there's going to be a time where everybody is going to be going this way. Right now, there's a real possibility that those departments and municipalities that are on the forefront of this may be able to find some grant funding. So I would encourage us to look at that at this stage of the game to see if maybe the early birds may be able to get that funding grant federal. Right.
I just have one comment. I had met with two that may come in and would like to develop something here in Hagerstown as far as old structures. And talking about, because they've been told, you know, there are problems. And in my discussion with them, and these are people that are totally outside of the city, outside of the state of Maryland. And the one gentleman looked at me and he said, you know, he said, they had done an investment somewhere else and said, you know, I looked at the problem and I decided we need to be proactive on this instead of reactive. And unfortunately for the city of Hagerstown, we are more reactive instead of proactive. And that's why I have not a problem to go forward with it. However we can find it, I'm one that will say yes emphatically because I know what is out there, and I'm seeing it when it's out there. And I'm usually involved with something that's just happening. So I have no problem, and I want that understood. And the people, they know me well enough that that's where it's at with me.
Certainly, it sounds like we have a consensus to continue with the next steps that you put forth here in terms of continuing to gather information, monitor the State Assembly, look at the budget preparation, and the other steps you outline there, so...
Yeah, the budget preparation would be the only signal for me. If you need me to include that in this budget cycle or put it in as a placeholder pending grant funding or some other source, like a CIP-type item, I'm not sure. I'm probably speaking out of turn here, but do you want it in this budget cycle or next or...
I think you can follow up with Bruce on that, but it sounds like, it sounds like we, there's definitely an interest in getting a program fleshed out. So I would say follow up with Bruce in terms of the budget presentation and how that's come along, whether he wants to look at it in terms of a CIP or out of the general fund.
And with the speed camera money, where are we at with that? I mean, what is it now being used for? Because I know that there has been a reduction because people have really started to slow down. But what do you see the revenue on that part?
That's a tough one. That's one we've been working with Michelle on.
I know.
Trying to project that. We only have two years of data, so it's really tough to kind of project anything.
But in what we're using it for, and it's, all of it can be public safety. My question is, is that can any of it be rolled over into this if we do, in fact, find some grant funding that may not be enough, but at least we could add to it?
Yeah, all the speed camera money is going to public safety.
Right.
And so it just goes straight into our budget and the fire department's budget.
Correct. Right. But that's what I'm saying, you know? If there can be something that can be collaborative here with fire and with... It's a matter of seeing.
If you spend it for this, then you have to find general fund money to pay for the thing that's not being paid for.
And I know that, Marty, I know that. But that's what I'm saying. But this is specifically for public safety. So what part of public safety, okay, comes higher?
Follow up with Bruce on the budget.
Yep, we'll follow up with him. And I'll come back after the state legislations are over this session, and we'll see what comes out of Annapolis, and then we'll open up some more discussion.
Keep moving forward. Well, thank you for this presentation. Thanks, Captain. Next item on the agenda is the proposed abandonment of the rail line by CSX Transportation. Staff is basically saying that we cease any attempt, as we had earlier indicated, that we may potentially want to acquire this corridor, but it seems like, given the limitations, nothing really feasible.
Yeah, once we got into the study of it, drafted a survey of it, we found out that CSX has already given a couple pieces of it away twenty years ago.
Which is not lawful, as I understand it.
Probably not.
We'll add that to the list of grievances against CSX that we're compiling.
Rodney, since looking at this map doesn't mean anything to me, can you please tell me if part of this track is the one that runs over Coon Avenue?
Yes, that's exactly it.
Okay, could, has anybody been out on Coon Avenue or any of my council members?
Yeah.
Coon Avenue, okay, because, I mean, all of that. We have everything that's on those tracks, okay?
Yeah, the one that cuts right through the middle of that property. I mean, there's a building, basically.
Well, that's part of the one that they've already abandoned to that...
Yeah, exactly. That's the curricular property.
Yeah, and that is countyo, is it not? What part of that is city? What part of that is county?
The Coon Avenue is in the city.
Not all?
No, but the front portion where the track is, it is.
Okay, the front portion. So the back portion, I, some of it is covered over with now the one that has the Tabasco thing and the swimming pool thing, but there's a lot of wood back there. Then on the other side of it, there's a lot of other stacks of stuff all over. And to me, what part of that is in the city? I mean, see, it could be both. If you're across the track, it could be county. If you come this way, it's in the city. But again, it's an eyesore. Do you understand what I'm saying? Code, you know, you talk about code. Oh, Lord, what a mess.
Well, I think some, most of it, what you're talking about, I believe, is in the city and some of it's outside the city limits. But regardless, I think the property owners adjacent are starting to use the railroad property because it hasn't been used for twenty years.
Yes, and that's the thing. And nobody's keeping track now of it.
There's still a sign on where, was Four States Livestock Auction? There's a sign there right next to the railroad track that isn't there that says railroad crossing.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's just been kind of falling away over the last twenty years.
And Rodney is definitely on point in terms of trying to get them to remove the track so that our roads are not continually affected and the traveling experience of drivers.
That's actually how this all started. I think five years ago, I asked them to remove the tracks. And then two or three years passed, and they filed this abandonment. But it sounds like now they're ready to remove the tracks across the actual streets.
I don't hear any willingness on the part of the council to railbank, continue with any discussion of railbanking for any kind of public purpose because it just doesn't seem feasible.
No.
And, you know, there was talk about the, you know, some of the crossing credits, you know, closing down these crossings, being able to be used for credits for new crossings. But we were told that because it was an abandoned line, that those credits aren't even there available to us, which affects the project we have along Marsh Run with the Hyke Biker Trail there. So we'll continue to work with CSX. But it's interesting that we have the previous agenda item involving police cameras and then this particular item involving CSX because I would, the crime that occurred over the weekend was not near City Park. It was on CSX property.
Yes.
And I wish the local news media would pay attention to that fact and report that fact instead of editorializing near where this crime occurred. It's really frustrating. And like I said, I'm compiling a list of grievances against CSX. And if we have to, we'll take them to court to address the security issues they have on their property, ongoing criminal activity, the fact that they abandoned parts of this rail line before going through the approved public process, and on and on and on.
Rodney, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we still have issues about the rails and so forth? I gathered that we may have in a few places. Do we still have issues with CSX? And do we need to file with whoever the Surface Transportation Board as part of the abandonment hearing that there are these things that CSX needs to do? Regardless of whether we, you know, want the right of way or not?
I think the only problem that I know of is that we have issues at the street crossings that are rough and unmaintained. We wanted to take those completely out and just restore it to a street section.
And couldn't we just simply send, become a party with the Surface Transportation Board and say, you know, you should include this in terms of your ruling when you rule on the abandonment?
That it's required that they...
That it's required that they do that.
I think we definitely can do that.
That would give us more ammunition if it came to a struggle with them or a legal fight. And I don't think we need to get real legal with it. We write a simple, clear letter to the Surface Transportation Board.
Okay, I can do that.
And or any other issue we might have, which is, this needs to resolve.
You know, I think about what's going to happen to the rail beyond the streets, you know, where it crosses across the country, so to speak. And I think it may stay there for a long time until CSX does something about that. How they're going to disperse the property to the joint property owners, who knows how long that'll take. But I guess my, as a city engineer, my main focus right now is just to get the streets back in shape. Because we still have school buses stopping east, and they die every twenty years.
Well, we could say that we have concerns with what will happen to private property, but as the corporation of Hagerstown, we particularly are concerned with, you know, crossing our right of ways.
Okay.
And we could mention that.
Mm-hmm. We'll put that together.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rodney.
Moving right along, we have our action report, an update on the community-city center plan.
Kathy and I are here this evening to give you an update on the community-city center plan. Just for the audience watching at home, the city center plan was delivered by Urban Partners as our consultants a little over six months ago. And we have been doing routine updates to the mayor and council of actions completed in the implementation of the plan, which is eight catalytic projects to strengthen the downtown area, the city center core of Hagerstown. A couple of comments is that the memo represents actions completed by the mayor and council as well as partners and stakeholders, as well as a team of staff members. And we want to recognize that these accomplishments are the work of many individuals. Jumping right into catalyst project number one is the goal of creating Class A office space on the Central Lot to build as much as 154,000 square feet of new office space. Actions that we've completed to date is the issuance of a request for qualifications to, for a developer partner, which was posted on a number of outlets and websites to attract the real estate and development community with a deadline for submission of March. And we've also publicized this opportunity through a broadcast email to both local stakeholders and contacts that we have through email distribution. And local media have done some coverage of this opportunity, which has provided some good promotion. In the memorandum, we have some next steps identified. Some key areas there is a tentative schedule with the deadline of March 2nd to receive submittals. And then we'll be back to the mayor and council in early March to give you an update. We'll be shortlisting candidates and a more detailed presentation in mid to late April. And the next project is the Maryland Theater.
Before we go there?
Sure.
Just a question, because I've had this asked of me twice now, and I want to make sure that I'm clear. The way that I thought that we sort of rolled this out was that it would be for a project within the downtown that would generate Class A office space. And as we've refined it, we went from sort of that being the objective to it being associated with Central Lot to now it being for the MNT Building. And folks with other properties in our core that may have an interest, that may not include this specific property at this specific location, feel that the rollout of this RFQ automatically disqualifies them from submitting a request. Is it the case that other individuals that may have similar interests that may not involve this specific property are now disqualified from submitting a competitive request?
If we're not talking about city property, I don't understand why they wouldn't be able to develop whatever they want to develop.
MNT isn't city property.
Right, but they are...
It's a privately owned property.
But we're talking about that property and the adjacent property. I don't think anyone's talking exclusively about the MNT Bank property. It's being, it's all tied together.
I understand, but the developer would have to come in and through some process of partnership with the city, acquire the MNT property as part of this larger project.
It's an option on this project, subject to direct negotiation between the developer and MNT Bank.
Right, I don't think there's a role in the city.
So our offering is the city site, and we're looking for developers to present their qualifications specifically for the development of the city-owned property. Should MNT property become a part of the project that is clearly mentioned in the request for qualifications as subject to direct negotiation between the developer and MNT?
So if there's some other property within the downtown that can, that can through a comparable public-private partnership meet the goal of developing Class A office space, it would not qualify because it doesn't fit within these specific parameters?
We're looking, we're looking for a developer to respond specifically to this offering of city land. The reason MNT is in there is because of its proximity to the city land.
And I feel like I've asked this question as we have continued to sort of pigeonhole it into this specific proposal. I recall some earlier discussion where we talked about, what if it was along Washington Street, and somebody wanted to take out those three structures that were still associated with Central Lot? Or on this portion of Franklin? I guess I just didn't envision that through this process we were going to exclude opportunities that may create the same result.
If I may provide clarity, the RFQ is for the specific site, proposals for that. However, this process does not exclude any other developer on any other site from coming to us and saying, I own property A, B, and C, and I want to build a Class A building here. We would meet with them, the same as we meet with any other business prospect. We would offer them first our stock programs, a First Third and PEP. And if there were some other ask, we would bring that to the mayor and council as a business attraction effort. And so this process does not exclude anyone from developing any other property at any time, and we would gladly welcome other... time and, and we would gladly welcome other proposals outside of this process. If that answers your question.
It does, but I don't think that that is clearly conveyed in the direction that we've taken.
Understood.
And I just don't want to see the opportunity-
Who's having, who has confusion about that? Are you speaking with actual developers in the community?
Yeah, we had this discussion at our, at our EDC meeting, just at the last meeting.
Well, there are still certain elements in the community, let me just say this, that think that because we didn't come up with some master developer agreement with a particular entity, that we've sort of excluded all potential development from anywhere in downtown. What I keep reiterating is if people own private property and they want to develop it or redevelop it, there is nothing that stops them from doing that. And I think as John Agley put it, the city will be welcome, welcome them into a partnership or to provide them with whatever resources we can possibly consider.
And for me, if the goal is to, is to obtain a project which creates Class A office space and meets that catalyst objective, to me, it doesn't need to be at one specific location.
No, but the thing we have is property that we own, that we can offer at, for zero, which we would hope would be an attraction to a potential developer. I think that's the key. We, we own and control this property now, just like there are other people who own and control property now who could also look at redeveloping or developing their property. But this again is to be a demonstration of what is possible and we would hope it would spur other private property owners to consider developing or redeveloping their property.
I think also in the tenant recruitment component of this, that we will see people who are interested in A space but may also consider B space or the renovation of property in the downtown. So we do think that this will spur interest in renovation of existing buildings as a part of the tenant recruitment process.
Can we say again what John just said, to dispel people at EDC or wherever else, you know, there's urban legends floating all around this town. We welcome proposals. If you want to develop your site, come see the staff at EDC. Come talk to us, you know. But this particular proposal has always been about the, the city lots and MNT is only in there because it makes a better land use piece there because of where it sits.
And they've indicated a willingness to be involved.
And, well, but, but this is, can go forward without them or with them. It all, that would be part of the negotiation. But it doesn't mean that we won't talk or bring the programs, a, a, as Mr. Listition just said, to bear in other parts of downtown. It does not exclude anybody interested.
In fact, we hope it catalyzes that activity.
That doesn't mean that we'll take every deal that comes down the pipe, but if people want to talk and use the programs that we've worked hard to make available, which nobody seems to hear about, even though when I was in EDC, I would, you know, refer to them over and over again. So it's, it's frustrating and I know what Kristen's going through. He hears all this stuff and, but I, I, I think it's very easy to distinguish what the Urban Partners track has been all along. And yes, we're hoping not only to, to stimulate other Class A office space, but, but to stimulate redevelopment of the older buildings in other parts of town. That's what gave me a lot of heartburn, the fact that we were focusing on, you know, vacant property rather than fixing up the buildings. But nobody in this town seems to be able to do that, so we're hoping that maybe bringing tenants and, and good quality development in will show the way. That's the way I understand it.
Mr. Mayor, just one last point to Councilmember Elshire's point. We can work with Aaron Wolfe, our communications manager, and put out some, some additional information to make it abundantly clear through, through our media sources that we are here to accept proposals on any parcel downtown. And aside from this specific proposal where we own the land and so we'll work with Aaron on that to, to make sure that that's clearly understood.
I think that will be very helpful. Thank you.
And part of what the goal was with this project through Urban Partners was it could be a demonstration for others who might have land that they want to clear because it was showing the cost benefit analysis of how this could work. Because we're not seeing very much new construction downtown. This might show how it could be done.
Thank you.
The next catalyst project is the Maryland Theater expansion project and an update with information that was supplied by the Maryland Theater staff is that fundraising has achieved 452,000. They're approximately 13,000 short plus any extras that may come up during the construction. And this is for the seating campaign. And included in that figure is the 100,000 matching funds contribution of the mayor and council. They have received their building permit for the seat replacement project. They've completed the installation of the HVAC units as well as the removal of the, the old units. Some next steps for the Maryland Theater is transitioning to a Ticketmaster system for more advancement in technology and making their ticketing system more patron friendly. And they're also refinishing the floors and preparations for the seats to arrive within approximately a week. On catalyst project number three, which is the USMH expansion support, the mayor and council authorized us to proceed with the request for statement of interest to identify a developer partner for student housing project. We posted that request for statements of interest in, on a variety of different internet sites with a January 16th deadline. We also mailed the, an announcement to property owners in the targeted area as well as talking to the, the city partners and the Partners for Economic Progress participants in that program. We had an announcement from the state that we've been awarded 100,000 in community legacy funding for the project and there has been media promotion of this project as well. So the deadline occurred last Friday and there were seven statements of interest received and it represents six properties. There are two of those statements of interest which represent a partnership on one of the properties.
Let me ask you a question about this. Is there any possibility that this effort, this particular effort may be damaged by possible budget cuts in higher education at state level?
I can't speculate on that. I think that, I think that this is a tremendous opportunity. We have support from University System of Maryland for this project. There was interest to move on a fairly fast timeline with potential for the first pilot project coming on board in August of this year. So we're hopeful that this could move forward with, with existing budget allocations by various partners.
And we're reviewing these submittals with three members of the USMH staff. So they're clearly still engaged.
Let's not suggest it to them.
And we also, I think that's why we throw in a little bit for that lobbyist so that they can keep us up to date on, on any potential threats to the funding for USMH.
So we've received, we've received six letters of interest?
It's seven statements of interest.
Okay.
Representing six properties.
And there was no limitation to specific location from those interested parties, right?
Well, it was within a two-block-
There was a target area.
Ra, radius of the university, right?
Okay, because this, this also was a conversation that came up a little at the EDC meeting. One was as it was associated to, I think there were folks that feel like area on the North Potomac Street where some of those larger places with the residential units are becoming more available, just because they're more than two blocks away doesn't mean that they may not be good opportunities. And the second is an issue that was brought up about Kaplan University and their possible interest of, because their students are housed in dorms, which are at the college, I guess.
They have dorms?
Yeah, and they're pretty much a, they're, yeah, they're trying to get away from that and their, their thought was maybe if they could partner with this, yeah, partner with the city to bring those students into some of these locations that it shouldn't, we shouldn't just look at University of Maryland, Hagerstown need, but there may be, yeah, maybe an interest from Kaplan or other-
But again, what one hopes would come from this partnership that the city has with USMH is to simply demonstrate that there is a market for this type-
Right.
-of housing that we would hope would be picked up by the private sector and, and marketed to these various institutions and their, their students.
The request for statement of interest identified a targeted area, it did ask those submitting to say whether their property was inside or outside of that targeted area so that the submissions received identified in or out.
Were some out?
We have not yet reviewed.
Okay. So they had the opportunity to submit.
They have the opportunity.
Despite?
Yes, my understanding that some of the kids from Kaplan now pay to stay in those places and they'd be in interest to find another location. There's payment already being made.
Right.
And it may not need to be limited to that. And their question was, in this particular case, we're only looking like at a 10 or 12 unit-
Right.
-spot, they may be looking at an interest of like a 40 to 80.
There's one on the corner of Antietam and Summit.
Antietam and Summit, oh, I have one.
What could that be? The Herald Mall.
No. Across the street.
But that's what it used to be. It used to be student housing.
And it's a shame that when we had the advantage, when the YMCA moved out, that we did not take advantage of getting that old YMCA because how many of those that housed men there? We had everything that was there.
Although I don't know if any college student these days would want to live in that type of residential structure with the, the common bathrooms and-
Well, what I'm saying is-
I mean, there's certain living standards that-
If, if there was a vision, okay, that things could have been improved upon and as large as what that facility is, yes, it could be very good.
Sure, it's got some potential.
Jill, have you, have you met with people from Volvo yet?
Had a preliminary conversation with them, yes.
And you're going to continue meeting?
We have a meeting scheduled for a follow-up conversation specifically about this opportunity.
I think that offers some real potential for downtown and I don't, you know, may, maybe they feel that all the, all those students have to be in one place, but quite frankly, I think it's good for downtown if all their students don't have to be in one place, just close to one another.
Good opportunity for us to explore more of that.
Yeah.
Before I turn it over to Kathy, I wanted to-
But I want to thank you for following up on that.
You're welcome. I wanted to add an additional action that the city has taken through the IT department is a request for information for broadband partnership opportunities and that is supportive of many of the catalyst projects, although not specifically mentioned in our memo. That is another accomplishment that we're underway with. And so I'll turn it over to Kathy to keep running us through the show.
Okay. The next, the next project is catalyst project number five, which is linking City Park and Washington County Museum of Fine Arts with, in the AD district through a trail and new housing.
Pull your mic a little closer.
All of these, all of these items on here have to do with the trail.
Thank you.
And these are actions completed since the last quarterly report that we provided to you. Park plan rendering for the Trail Park at Baltimore Street, which is basically kind of across Hood Street from the county office building, has been further developed and there's some renderings attached to this package. The presentation on that, as well as the entire trail design, was presented to the planning commission last week and they were very interested in the design. And our committee has been formed to identify opportunities for art along the trail. The Platts are 30% complete and Hagerstown Police Department has identified potential camera locations along the trail and the plan and the profile construction drawings are 30% complete. The next steps will be city attorney will be start work on the easement deeds. We will be sending drawings to residents on Summit Avenue whose properties front the trail. We'll be working on a conduit plan for camera locations. We'll be submitting a request to modify the existing CSX crossing in January and man or designer is working on details for lights, landscaping, signs, trails, material, et cetera. So this is moving along very nicely.
Can I just reiterate for the public that this is more than just a trail? This is, yes, it will serve, and I walked from City Hall today to our luncheon at the Museum of Fine Arts. I walked the proposed path of this trail. It is certainly the most direct route between downtown and City Park. But what we, what I heard specifically from Jim Hartling of Urban Partners was if you're not going to build a stadium in that area, you need to build a neighborhood. And this trail is the heart of what we hope will be a new neighborhood in the, in the future years. It will take decades, I'm sure, to achieve ultimately, but this trail is the first step in making that transformation happen in that old industrial area, in that part of town.
I have to leave, but I want to reiterate my comment from previous discussion that I think, I want to make it clear, I don't think that it's a bad property. I don't think that it is improperly, you know, overseen and, and cared for, but I think that that service center serves as a physical barrier and impediment to truly linking City Park to the trail. If you go past that service center, which is, you know, at some level of operation and see that triangle of, of grass area, I, I just find that, I think that when we talk about what's critical of making this a success and we talk about public safety and things like that, I think that some removal of that physical impediment and incorporating that into this trail is, is critical to creating that link.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to concur in that opinion. I looked at that place today and I think that Kristen is absolutely right in his assessment of the situation there. That could be a lovely area if it were well-planted and cleaned up for the, for the trail to kind of terminate nearby. And I want to follow up on what you said, Mr. Mayor, about it being the beginning, but I think it's important that as we go, we think constantly about how does this link to the adjoining properties? What can we do to foster change, you know, on adjoining properties? Do we need to be an active redeveloper? The parking lot with the stadium is going to be the, you know, the Kennedy Building. How do these things, you know, I think we should be encouraging it all along, you know, to the extent, and think about it during the design process.
Parking lots are not the highest and best use of that area.
So, you know, that would be my, my concern. I'm, I'm sure you're doing some of that, but I think, you know, we really need to tie this in. It's part of this theme, making this thing work from the get-go somehow.
And that sort of, that idea was behind shifting the trail over to Summit in Pennsylvania and having it run down a street that's more like an alley so it'll run by businesses.
And it really makes, and it makes perfect sense too in terms of pedestrian intent.
And that was good, yeah.
It doesn't really take you off track at all. It really makes a lot of sense to go up Lee and then down Virginia slash Summit.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
The next project is catalyst project number six, which is the expanded downtown arts and events programming. The goals are to leverage resources to produce more frequent events and build upon the atmosphere created by popular downtown events. Actions completed since the last report, the Ruben Cutting took place November 20th for a new Little Free Library in University Plaza sponsored by Crossford State University Educators Association. It's a little red box on a hole by the northernmost entrance into the, into the USMH classrooms in the city's building on the other side of the plaza. I was looking at that today while I was in USMH. The second holiday pop-up shop event weekend took place November 21st and 23rd in conjunction with the annual city tree lighting event, which was an encore event on Black Friday, November 28th and a small business Saturday, November 29th. The second annual donut drop took place on New Year's Eve with a large attendance, with a larger attendance over the previous year's event. The second annual reindeer run, the Storybook Holiday Events took place in November. City Dollar, City Center Dollars as a program was transitioned from a paper certificate to a credit card program to accommodate the program's growth. The Washington County Playhouse opened under new management is now offering both traditional and children's theater. The next steps, Main Street Hagerstown launch event is scheduled for March 12th where community members can learn more about the Main Street Hagerstown program and committees. St. Patrick's Day Run will be expanded in 2015 to include a half marathon in addition to the 5K and the one-mile walk. The State Arts and Entertainment District Annual Meeting will take place in Hagerstown on April 20th. The next project is the, there's two more. Catalyst project number seven, expanded operations of the city farmer's market. The goal of this is expanded operations from a seven-hour to a 35-hour market per week, implement the private management approach and make necessary capital improvements, rebrand and recruit additional tenants.
Do we have any public-
Do we have any public meetings scheduled for that yet? Are we working towards, just like we are with many of these other projects, having public input, are we, do we have a date or are we looking at dates for that, for the farmer's market?
We, we, as I've gone in here, we contracted with Urban Partners to help us with a strategy for implementing this project. They sent us some ideas in, um, mid-December, which we're still reviewing, but part of what they're doing for us is they're interviewing, uh, folks to see what, uh, people who are, I guess, in the farmer's market management world, what they think would be necessary to make this attractive to them. So it's all a part of our process, but no, we haven't had any meetings yet.
Because I do think it's important that we continue reaching out to the community to get their input. Uh, I'm sure the vendors that are in the farmer's market already will have something to say, but it would be nice also to get even wider community input on that.
We did have a meeting with the market vendors to, um, give them an overview of the, of the whole aid catalytic projects as well as this particular one. Um, and there's opportunities for, um, future public input either through Engage Hagerstown or through meetings to get community input on next steps.
Thank you.
But frankly, we've been pretty preoccupied with that, the office project and the student housing project.
No, no doubt.
But we definitely need to pick that back up again. Um, and we, we are using some of the unexpended DBED grant fund to, to paper with partners to help us with this, to get the, help us through the RQ or RQ process, whichever it shall be. Um, the next steps will be finalize and issue the request for proposals for the private market manager. And then finally Catalyst Project Number Eight is the Expanded Targeted Home Ownership Support, um, idea. The goal here is to market homeownership incentives and support neighborhood-first programs, establish annual rental licensing inspections and continue excessive news and loosens enforcement programs. Actions completed since we last reported, the state announced that we've been awarded $100,000 in Community Legacy to assist with our homeownership programs. That was nice. We got awards for both of the things we applied for. Um, in terms of the hiring of the staff to help improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods, it's approved by the Mayor and Council, we've hired one new neighborhood services inspector. His name is Josh Green. He's been with us a month. We've also, um, hired Emily McFarlane as a program administrative specialist in our office. She was down in the City Clerk's office.
That's why I haven't seen her.
She's now up with us. Yeah. That's who we're able to deal with. Um, we're currently interviewing for the two other, um, positions for the neighborhood Services Inspectors and finalizing the, um, the job description for the Vega Structures Program position. Uh, staff are currently in the process of identifying properties to acquire, renovate and resell for the single-family homeownership program. And so that's an update on that. And also finally, Adam, if you want to touch on the promotional job, let's, let's start.
We, yeah, we're also using, um, the unexpended DBED grant money to, uh, develop some marketing materials to promote the catalytic plans, um, as well as, uh, look at the real estate community to identify developers locally, um, but also regionally and nationally to have more attention, um, on Hagerstown and the development opportunities.
Well, I just want to thank staff for, I like to refer to things as, uh, like juggling, keeping things up in the air and it's not, these aren't just balls we're trying to all keep up in the air. You're really juggling some watermelons. Um, and watermelons, when they crash, make a big mess. So I appreciate you keeping all these watermelons up in the air and, uh, you know, working feverishly really to keep all these things in line. The good work that is being done with these grants, the fact that we got both, uh, the Community Legacy grant, uh, grants that we were going for in an environment where we were told not to really expect much of anything, I think is a really, uh, positive affirmation of the work that we're doing. So keep up the good work. Mr. Munson.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, I'd like to thank you all for this report. This is a really good piece of work. It's, uh, it's very focused. It's, uh, very detailed and the items in it are things that can happen to make Hagerstown a better place. And the fact that you all come here on, uh, on, on a regular basis to keep us informed about what's happening, I think is really good for us and the citizens of Hagerstown. So thank you very much for this.
Any other questions or feedback?
No, thanks. I think we requested this kind of thing so we can kind of keep an eye on, keep track and I think it helps you guys focus too, frankly. I think everyone, we can all, you know, stay on where we are with it. So thank you.
No dust settling on these plans, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's what we asked for and we got it.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item on the agenda is the Standards and Conditions for Sidewalk Business License.
We're back. As we promised and following up on our proposal to amend Chapter 16, 216 Streets and Sidewalks to add a new article for private use of public sidewalks, part of what we talked about, that we need to come up with some standards and conditions for issuing business licenses for this, uh, use in the sidewalk for sidewalk sales, et cetera. And so that's what we're back to discuss today.
I think it's kind of like the cafe license. There's no charge for it. They can come in and apply for it. I think the couple of critical things to point out is that the way it's drafted, and certainly want to hear your input, is the frequency, that they could have four events that could last up to three consecutive business days, a year, where they could have the stuff sitting out on the, the sidewalk and, um, to be on display. And then there are some restrictions on the amount and the size of the display and also, of course, keeping the sidewalk clear for pedestrians. So that's spelled out in here as well. And they'd have to provide insurance, just like the cafes do. So we try to keep it simple, but put the important points in there that we think we need to address.
Could you just, for the sake of the public understanding, differentiate this from other parts of the ordinance that address yard sales citywide? This is not the same thing, correct?
Right. This, this is a standards and conditions for, in the downtown area for when a commercial business wants to display their merchandise on the sidewalk, how often it can occur and under what conditions.
So there is a separate ordinance that deals with yard sales, whether they're in downtown on the sidewalk or up in the north end in someone's front yard, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think these are all reasonable regulations. The intent is to protect the public safety and access, to make sure there's adequate visibility at intersections, to make sure hydrants aren't being blocked or entrances. Uh, it just seems like common sense to me. Any...
And, and Mary keeps our downtown from looking like a junkyard sometimes, too.
Right. It improves the quality of life for the neighborhoods. Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comments? So good for a vote, a vote on this next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
A separate motion for this.
Yeah. Practical side of it and then the ordinance will also be another.
Indeed, yep.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to Mayor and Council comments. Who'd like to begin? Mr. Metzner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Nye.
Oh. Now, I, my big concern is the, um, structure that we own on Antietam Street that's going to be torn down, um, has got trash along the side and I've had to call repeatedly for this and there are those that are violating, um, as far as putting their property on that property. And I just continue to see more and more lined up along that side. And of course, again, it gives us a black eye. All right? So, but that's it. I don't remember anything else. I have too many notes everywhere here tonight.
Okay. Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, uh, last Wednesday I attended the, uh, uh, opening session or reception. I didn't get to the opening session because we had a business meeting for the Maryland Municipal League of the Legislative Affairs Committee. Uh, we kicked off our legislative review, uh, but then we had a reception for the General Assembly Delegates and, uh, staff that, uh, chose to attend and we had some interesting outside visitors like Congressman Bellamy. So it was a very interesting, uh, reception, a lot of good contacts and I think that, the word interesting is the word I heard used most often by everybody of both parties, staff who are elected official about, you know, the upcoming, uh, General Assembly Session. So, uh, a lot of interesting things happening. I'll just reiterate that.
Interesting is the key word, right?
Yep.
Mr. Munson?
Um, I have several comments, Mayor. Uh, Penny has reminded me of one and, uh, that is that, uh, where the drop-off box is at Burhans Boulevard and Pennsylvania Avenue, there's a whole bunch of junk sitting around it. Uh, so that needs to be attended to by somebody. Um, several things that I'd like to mention, uh, three actually. Uh, I'd like to note the death of Virginia Messerschmidt Strine. Um, Mrs. Strine and, and her, and her husband, former Judge Jim Strine, have been friends of mine for a long time. And, um, this lady has been a real shaker and mover in her day in this community. And the community, the whole community is better off because she was here. She's an outstanding human being. Uh, her family consists of two daughters. Uh, one daughter lives in California and she's a transportation specialist consultant and she works in rocketry, actually, as part of transportation. And her other daughter, uh, Mrs. Strine's other daughter Nancy, uh, used to work for the city of Hagerstown, but recently she retired from the U.S. Department of Transportation and now works for the city of Martinsburg, West Virginia. Mrs. Strine will be missed to this community. Uh, secondly, there was a recent headline in the newspaper about some actions that the police have taken. And I want to, uh, thank the police, congratulate the police and give the police kudos. And when I'm talking about the police here, I'm talking about the Washington County Narcotics Task Force, which includes four members who are Hagerstown police. The headline reads, "Two Men Charged After Raid on Suspected Drug House." And if you'll just bear with me while I read only one paragraph, it says, and I quote, "A Hagerstown man faces 37 drug and weapons charges after a raid on a Chestnut Street home on Wednesday produced large quantities of suspected marijuana and silo-sybin mushrooms," according to court documents. The, I would like to thank the police because undoubtedly in finding this place, in raiding this place, in doing their job, they have helped this community immensely. They certainly helped thousands of people who would have been affected negatively by the products in this house, but in all likelihood, the situation is such that there could have been severe violence around this place and people could have actually been injured or killed because of the, the amount of weapons involved. So Chief, um, take the message back, will you? This is a great piece of work and we appreciate it. Um, now, the last item I want is, I want to, uh, give high congratulations to a lady by the name of Karen Hamilton, a resident of this community. Uh, Karen owns a business in Hagerstown, the name of which is Audiology Services, which is located at 201 Prospect Avenue. Last Saturday or there, thereabouts, Karen was awarded her Doctorate of Audiology after her many years of studying very hard to achieve it. So again, kudos to Karen. Um, and incidentally, if, if you know her, if you see her, she says it's okay to call her Doc when you see her. So from now on, it's Doc. But I want to make this appointment, this point, because this is a very important point, I think, and the news media needs to pick up on this. In addition, Dr. Hamilton and her husband, Scott, a Hagerstown heart doctor, has donated $50,000, donated a $50,000 system to the Maryland Theater that will allow individuals who were hearing aged to hear far better and to much better enjoy the experience at the Maryland Theater. This is a significantly large donation by two individuals and it will assist a very large group of individuals who wish to attend the theater, enjoy it more than was ever possible for them before. And I would personally like to thank Karen and Scott for caring so much about the city of Hagerstown and the theater that they were willing to make this very significant donation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, uh, I have a few things. Uh, the first is last Thursday I met, uh, with the Washington County Housing Authority or the Housing Authority of Washington County. Uh, I met their new executive director, whose first day on the job was, uh, the very meeting I was attending. Uh, I, uh, just as I had when I met with the Housing Authority of Hagerstown last month, uh, proposed to them that, uh, the two boards of those housing authorities explore the idea of consolidation. Uh, so we had some exchange of ideas about that. It seems like there is a willingness on the part of the Housing Authority of Washington County to explore that idea, uh, as there was with the Hagerstown Housing Authority. So I look forward to continuing that conversation between those two boards. Will undoubtedly be not an easy process. It won't be quick, but I do think it is necessary and will benefit the entire community if that result can be achieved. So stay tuned on that. Uh, also, uh, with regard to the Alms House, I've received some communication that, uh, essentially people are going to show up with pitchforks and torches if we ever talk about tearing down the Alms House. And I just want to make it very clear that there is no such proposal on the table, uh, but we are considering what to do with the Alms House because we cannot continue with the status quo. Um, I took, since Councilmember Alshire's not here, to talk about his dog walks with, uh, late at night. I did take a, a walk with my dogs at 10, 10 o'clock last night, uh, by the Alms House so I could get a closer look. I think there are ways that that facility could possibly serve the public, but also be, uh, self-sustaining in terms of revenue that it could possibly generate. But I think we need more, uh, uh, information and we certainly, uh, I would like to have a tour. I've asked staff to look at, uh, sometime, uh, maybe in early spring, of setting up a tour for the Mayor and Council, uh, which would also serve as a public, uh, information meeting so that everybody can see, uh, what's going on with that facility and we can continue to look at how we can improve it. Um, I also wanted to mention that I attended a neighborhood meeting, uh, in the Jonathan Street community at the Robert W. Johnson Community Center, uh, last week. The, uh, it just reinforced to me, uh, what a positive relationship our police department has with the caring residents of that neighborhood. Uh, and this has been an ongoing, uh, practice and it's been a relationship that's been built up over decade, the last couple decades really, uh, with some longtime HPD officers. And I just want to congratulate, uh, the work of both the community and the police department, uh, for continuing that strong relationship and for the work that's being done to make that neighborhood a safe and strong neighborhood. Uh, I also attended this past weekend the annual banquet for the Hagerstown Giants, which is part of the Washington County Junior Football League. The Junior Football League is undergoing some changes, uh, but the Giants, uh, B-team were the, uh, champions last year, so I went to, uh, give some awards to those fine young folks and the coaches who, uh, dedicate themselves to helping those youth. So congratulations to the Hagerstown Giants. Uh, and lastly, uh, yesterday was a great day at the Martin Luther King Community Center. Uh, the day of service basketball tournament was a big success for the Robert W. Johnson Community Center as a fundraiser for them and some capital needs, uh, that they're undertaking. Uh, I want to thank the Police Athletic League for sponsoring the city team. We made it to the semifinals, uh, with no help from me, uh, but, uh, it was good to see, uh, the police officers once again stepping up and other city employees, uh, stepping up and, and being actively engaged in the community. So I want to thank them for that and, uh, congratulate the Robert W. Johnson Community Center on all the good work they're, they're continuing to do. And that's all the comments I have, so unless anyone has anything else, we will be adjourned. Thank you.